I'd like to call this a special session to order. It's Monday, June 26, 5:00 p.m. We have a special meeting and we're going to be talking about the Conservation District. So with that, we're set up a little bit different. You've got the Conservation District that will be up here. I'm going to turn it over to Mike Nordine to introduce his group, what they're doing. Then I'm going to turn it over to Eric Noble, Mayor Potem. He's going to run the rest of the meeting. Okay.
Okay. Well, first of all, I'd like to say thank you for pronouncing my last name correctly according to my heritage. That is correct. But being Americanized, we go by Nordine. But Nordine is, that's the proper way to pronounce it. I'm Mike Gordon. I'm the manager of the Pacific and the Gray's Harbor Conservation Districts. I don't know how many, I think a lot of you guys have heard what we've said before and have been involved with this. But we are an entity that is a subdivision of state government focused on natural resources. We are under R C W 8908. We are a voluntary incentive-based program that is non-regulatory and no taxing authority. We would like to, or what we're doing is we're offering to have the city of, the municipality of Ocean Shores be included into the district boundary. And obviously, that's up to the city council to decide on that. And I have some folks here with me. So to my far left here, I have Alexander Burke. He is our education and outreach coordinator. He does a myriad of different things, but the main reason he's here today is because he does a lot of school and outreach and community programs, something for more of the urban environments. And I have the assistant district manager, David Marcel. He is also kind of, is our operations manager also, so he knows a lot of, a lot of the numbers that you, we presented to the city council. And then we have Josh Gentoli. Josh works for the Washington State Conservation Commission. He is our regional manager. We, they do not, we are not subordinate to the Conservation Commission, but they are our guiding entity for us, so we listen to them and they give a lot of advice and we get a lot of funding from them. So they, I will let him also explain his position a little more when it comes to appropriate. I'm going to turn things over to David to talk about some of the questions that we heard from the last city council meeting. I just want to say that I apologize that I could not, we were training last week, plus I was in a car accident, and I'm doing okay, but it made it so I could not be here and answer some of those questions. But here we go.
All right. Chad, can you hear me okay? Great. All right. Well, some of you might have a packet. We only brought eight for the audience. Hopefully, council has it. The bulk of this packet's on the first and second page. I listened to the last meeting's recording several times, trying to pick up all those questions. And I think the packet here explains a lot of those, and I don't want to spend too much time going over line by line. I'll give you the meat and the potatoes of it, but I think we should just dive into questions and let us provide those answers for you, using everything we have in the packets here together. So, you know, there was kind of a question of the allocation between our expenses, what pays for us and what goes on the ground. So the first thing you see on the number side of things is just our basic balance sheet. Expenses on the top, revenues in the middle, balance at the bottom. So these are pretty conservative numbers, too. I think we ran a bit leaner than this, to be honest, on some things like rent, insurance, and whatnot, but I did the best I could with our numbers. And so, you know, all in all, we're 1.4 million bucks to operate for our staff and for everything. That includes our office and the Satsa Business Park, which we hope you come to someday. And then, you know, we pay for that through those revenues, $10.9 million. That's our current grant balances. The details of both those expenses for staff are included behind this page, and the details behind the grant revenues are behind that page. So those grant revenues, they are across, as you'll see, 60 different grants. They span from farm to water to engineering, you name it, kind of the myriad of areas that we cover. And so, anyway, you see the balance or remainder, and like that asterisk says, remainder goes to on-the-ground work. That's usually materials, labor for contractors, and in many cases, very expensive engineering firms that have to get us through permits. And then on that, you flip the page over, there's a pie chart that breaks it down. So, I mean, we're at 12.8% to operate, remaining 87.2. Like I'm saying, it goes on the ground to projects. And there's kind of a couple ways that money goes to private landowners for their projects, right? We'll either use that remaining $9.5 million to cost share with the landowner, which means they provide materials, they pay for everything, they hire their own contractor, and once they've done the job well done according to our specs, we reimburse them. I'm in the same boat as many people to where I can't even afford a cost-share project, even if, you know, again, the percentage was small, I just can't. So the other avenue we have is called a district implemented project. So you'll see a note in that packet, too, towards the back, that kind of give you more details on those differences. But the district implemented projects, like we're doing today, we go to Home Depot or wherever, we put the materials on our credit card, our restoration crews, they do the work, we pay their salary, and we cross our fingers hoping we get reimbursed at the end. So that takes the cash flow off the landowner. Anyway, I think I did a pretty good job summarizing that, and so financially, if there's any questions at this time, I feel good about that, but go ahead, Mike.
Yeah, I'm going to add one more thing. I made a comment in a previous meeting about that the, running over the financials would be confusing and complicated. That was a poor way for me to put that, made it sound like that somebody couldn't understand it. It's confusing and complicated in a way for a lot of people, when we hire new employee, it takes a long time for them to train them through the finances, because if you notice the list of projects, we're dealing with a lot of different entities. Every one of those entities has a different process, different paperwork, different rules, different regulations about how we can do the grant. There's a number of those. And then to put on top of that, we share staff between the Pacific and the Gray's Harbor Conservation Districts. It's an advantage for us financially, because instead of having the same staff in each district, we can have one person running both CDs. It's a cost-effective kind of way to do things. But because of that, that shared staff cost gets a little convoluted about who's working in what CD. We keep track, because everybody has to do their timesheet per, by hour per grant. But we have financial staff that understand that. But then we have to keep track of not only who's working on what grant, but what that billing goes to, and to coalesce, all the employees working on that specific program, going to that specific entity. So it gets a little thick. And I apologize for saying, you're saying before that it'd be too confusing or something like that. At that point in time, when I was mentioning that, I felt like I didn't really want to go into too deep answering that question at that point in time, because it would have taken a long time to explain that. But you have the list in front of you now for Gray's Harbor. There is an equal list about for Pacific also, and if you were to go to any other Conservation District in the West Side, probably even on the East Side, you're going to see they have the exact same kinds of length of lists in different groups, depending on the resource concerns that they're dealing with. So saying that, Josh, did you want to say anything about the commission?
Sure. Thanks, Mike. Yeah, as Mike said, I'm with the Washington State Conservation Commission. My name's Josh Gentoli. I work with eight Southwest Washington districts, including Gray's Harbor, Pacific, Mason, all the way down to the Gorge. So I work with all the various boards. And just a reminder, if it hasn't been stated before, each Conservation District Board is made up of three elected Board of Supervisors and two appointed supervisors that our agency appoints. And so each year, the Conservation District goes through an election cycle, and candidates run, and an election takes place. And that usually happens in January, February, or March. And that's provided for in our R C W 8908. So yeah, we, our agency, we work with the state's 45 Conservation Districts. We get money from the legislature for a variety of natural resource concerns, and we generally allocate that out equally amongst the 45 Conservation Districts. For example, we have a program called the Natural Resource Investment Program. And like, for example, Gray's Harbor would get an allocation equal to the amount that we got divided by 45. And what that allows them to go out and do is cost share with projects. It could be, you know, a cross fence in a pasture to help better manage livestock and pasture growth. You know, cost share for $5,000 that the landowner might put in, $800, or whatever that percent rate that each individual district has approved. You know, Gray's Harbor is part of the voluntary stewardship program, and that's a program that works to protect critical areas in the county. And so they might do projects that put a riparian planting in to help filter any potential pollutants into a nearby stream body. So we do a variety of programs. They're not all specific to this area. We work statewide. And we're a small agency. We're run by a 10-member commission with various natural resource representation on there, as well as governor appointees. Yeah, happy to answer any questions about our agency.
I just want to say that we work really hard to get more than that 1/45th part of those dollars.
All right. Thank you so much. I just want to say I really appreciate all of you taking your time and coming down here to answer any questions and being open to things that the council and public have to ask. How this is going to work is we're just going to do council questions first, and once, you know, the council has their questions, we'll open up to the public. And anybody who wants to ask a question, we can come up one at a time, and you can answer a question. I just want to say this is a question and answer time, not a comment time. So if you have a comment, if you could save it till maybe the meeting or something, that'd be fine. But if you have a question, by all means, you can ask them whatever you'd like. I also just want to preface by saying, you know, there's a, I've heard a concern that, you know, we're rushing this and going real fast with this, and why are we doing that? I personally don't think we are doing that, but at the last council meeting, Mayor Martin left it up to the council on what we wanted to do with this. And at the agenda setting, Lisa and I felt that we need to bring this back to the council. We need to get this moving and get it going. So this isn't a city thing. This is definitely, you know, some of the council members that are, you know, wanting to get this done. Mainly, from my perspective, it's kind of a no-brainer. There's very little to no risk to the city to do this, and there is massive potential gain for the city in doing this. It's easy to get into, it's easy to get out of. We cannot start working on grants with Sarah to partner with them until we're part of this district, so there's a lot of money sitting there that we have no access to. And when it comes to issues, especially the Marineview Drive erosion thing, that's going to cost a lot, a lot of money, we can't do it on our own. There's just no way. And here's an organization that can help us do that. So I just wanted to preface it with that. Did you? Nope. And with that, I'll open it up to questions. Go ahead, Frank.
Thank you. I would ask if the council would be okay with letting, we've got a lot of people out in the audience, let them go first. There's not as many of us here as there is out there. If you wouldn't have a problem with that?
Well, I mean, we're going to be here as long as it takes, until six, so go. I mean, I think there's not much of us, and then we can open it to them. So, because maybe some of the questions will be answered that they want to ask by us asking questions, too. So, does anybody have a question? Catherine?
I feel like I'm on the radio here. Thank you, Matt, for this giant screen. I hope it helps. I have several questions, so I'll do in turn. One of the things I looked for is a little bit, Josh, you mentioned this, talk to us about your Board of Supervisors and how that representation looks. Because what a lot of people see is we're giving up control, and we may not be getting representation. So does each territory within the district have a representative, or is it just catch-as-catch can? You said three people are elected, two are appointed. How does that process work?
So yeah, three are elected, two are appointed. Currently, we have, we actually have an opening right now. One of them is for an appointed position. The four that we have, we have somebody who's a business owner, also runs a commercial chicken farm. We have, that's Lisa Zaberek. We also have Nora Dolman, who is a cattle producer, who also has some forestry on the east side of the county. Kyle Dearkopf is a shellfish producer. And then we have Heather Smith, who has a nursery for trees and plants on the east side of the county. But I would say, okay, I'm just going to say from my own opinion, joining the district boundary, yeah, right now, you're not represented because you're not in the district boundary. You join the district boundary, especially it's fortuitous that we have an opening, somebody can apply from your city to be on, three are required to be natural resource producers out of that five. However that mix happens, three have to be landowners. Other than that, it gives an opportunity for somebody who's a non-landowner, non-natural resource person to be on there. We're covered on the landowner and the natural resource producer side. So pretty much anybody in the district boundary can run to serve. The other thing is, is that right now, even though we're not working in your area because you're on the district boundary, it's kind of irrelevant, but if you guys did join, you're, the folks in the city, the municipality, can't vote in our elections, so they have no voice in deciding who's running the CD. That all can change. And that's for the other two cities that joined, you know, Hoquiem and Aberdeen. Not a lot of people, it's a voluntary position. You don't get paid for it. So, and a lot of people are really intimidated, they don't know enough about natural resources. That's fine. You don't have to. You're representing your community. One thing that we're really trying to work hard on is to get community gardens and do stormwater issues, erosion issues inside cities. And we don't really have anybody who lives in the cities right now in either one of the CD boundaries. So that would be interesting to have somebody who actually could represent that. As far as how the process goes, out of the elected positions, one person is elected every year in rotation out of the three, and the appointed, I think there's a lapse of one year, but then there's years that they're, so they're three-year terms. And there's a process, there's a way that that all works out. So one year we'll have an appointed and an elected at the same time, the next one, then we'll have one year where there's just an elected person. If a position becomes open because someone resigns, there's a process for that, where the Board of Supervisors put out an advertisement in the papers and on our Facebook pages that there's an opening, and people can apply whether, if it's not during the elected cycle, even if it's an elected position, they can apply to be appointed by the board. But if it's an appointed position, it goes to the Conservation Commission. It just depends on which of those positions. And you had more questions?
Lisa had her hand up.
Hi. I just, you guys do help with bank line stabilization projects?
Yes.
As well? How about invasive species removal?
Yes.
So those are both practices covered in our community stream bank program, right? And that's our bread and butter, and that's frankly how I got the job here. So districts around the state, they vary in concerns, but most every county that has water and it has an erosion concern. So we handle that, and through our current community stream bank project that ends, well, this Friday with the biennial. But assuming everything happens next year as it was, we'll be doing that at 100% cost share, with the district paying for labor and materials all along the way.
Wonderful, because that is one area we desperately could use some help with.
And on that note, I'll say real quick, Tocqueville area, North Cove Beach, Washaway Beach, that was a huge project that unfortunately, we didn't have a nice documentary film at the time for that project, a small one, DIY. But anyway, that is a lot of what the calls we're getting for, for Westport, it's kind of down in Long Beach and the Cottas and areas, and obviously up here. So that's called a dynamic reventment best management practice, and that's something that's eligible through most national resource grants, too, for the sake of conserving soil and nothing else.
But we also can apply for grants on invasive species that are even outside the riparian area. I know that other beach areas here and on the North Beach Peninsula, there's Gorse. Gorse doesn't have a defined territory around riparian areas. And it is a quite, it's basically Scotch broom on steroids. If anybody knows Gorse, they know it. But those are all things that if we don't do it, we know who does. And one of the things about technical assistance, it's not necessarily all the time that we're looking to do the work. We're trying to help the landowner, whoever that is, whether it's the city, or the county, or whoever, we want to get them in the right place to solve those issues, because, well, we want them fixed, so.
Thanks. Anybody else? Go ahead.
So on your, I'll call it a P and L, the expenses are for Gray's Harbor.
Yeah.
1.32 for wages and benefits, and then there's 1.35 for Pacific County. My question is, are the revenues on this sheet inclusive of both counties?
No, not at all.
So the $10 million, almost $11 million, is just Gray's Harbor County and Pacific County as additional?
Yeah, absolutely. When you look at the very last page, I mean, it's, I showed our whole hand here on salaries, right? Nothing's up to the imagination. And so as you track it, the last page here, you'll see there's a GHCD share of employee expenses, and right next to it, that column says PCD share. You're going to notice everyone in that management tier, our salaries are split equally between the two. That's how we're effective. So these revenues, which are 10.9 million, are just Gray's Harbor's current active grants. Pacific, a little less funding down there, but, you know, we don't have the Shenilis River Basin to fix either.
Yeah, I saw that. You're talking about the small print spreadsheet. I recognized that Pacific was on there. I just wasn't sure about the grant piece of it, whether that's combined between the two.
Different district, differently.
So each district, although we manage both of them together, they are their own entities with their own five-person Board of Supervisors, they have their own grant contracts, we do not combine. And I don't think our boards would ever want us to, quite frankly. But yeah, it's, we have to run two operations with both.
The, you know, me managing, or our management team managing two CDs was a decision that was made in 2011, and it was, at that point in time, the Gray's Harbor Conservation District was not real active, not doing a lot, and we were asked to come in and manage the Gray's Harbor CD. So I'm actually, actually, all three of us are employed by the Pacific Conservation District, but we're contracted to help manage the, and work in the Gray's Harbor CD area. It's just for cost efficiencies and, but we keep things separate as far as, like David said, there's five different supervisors in each CD. They have different, they each have their own five-year long-range plans, and we are, it can give you kind of a pain sometimes, just knowing which hat I'm wearing, you know, talking about which, but we keep it pretty good separate.
I live in Gray's Harbor, too. I don't live in Pacific like these two, so.
So I wanted to say I was one of the ones that was quacking about the, not seeing the financials, so I really.
And that was very fair, actually.
Yeah, I really appreciate this, because it helped me a lot. And I see that, I was in retail for a long time, and we ran at about a 12% wage cost, and that's what you're running here. And that's, to me, that's pretty impressive for a government agency.
Yeah, and I have to say, a lot of grants allow you to go up to about 24%, sometimes even on the federal ones, 30%. We are basically just trying to cover our costs.
Right.
Of course, all of us want to make a living and all that stuff, and then we get to where, you know, we're not trying to be popperish or anything, but we try to be fair, is what we're trying to do. And I want to have good employee, quite honestly, for all of you, I hate training people. It costs a lot of money to train people. It costs more than you think, and I'd rather pay a little bit more to keep somebody on a little longer and keep them happy and stuff like that. The institutional memory and knowledge that comes with that is awesome, and yeah, it's so, I'm not trying to be the cheapest person in the room. We are well under the, what state agencies pay, or even federal agencies. I just got to tell you, that's just a truism. But, you know, probably don't even pay as well as a county does, but we try, I don't want to try and shortchange my people also.
So I'm mindful that the public has questions. I just have two really quick questions. I'll combine them. You can answer briefly, and then unless one of my colleagues has questions, I think the public would like to ask. First off, I cannot find any minutes from your meetings since December 8. And then second off, it looks like the Conservation Commission itself is the main source of the grant funding. Would that be correct?
No. Sorry. The RCO Recreation Conservation Offices, you'll notice that's one of our $5 million grants of the 10-5. The commission offers a lot of small grants. We get most of our on-the-ground funding through bigger sources. Bigger grants are harder to apply for. We would rather work with a Conservation Commission to do a small application process than a nine-month-long one, but for the Shenilis River Basin stuff, it's a bigger dollar need. So as a percentage, most of our stuff actually comes from RCO and Department of Ecology. Quantity of grants, sure. We go after a lot of small commission grants.
And most of them are state. They're not private grants.
Right. We apply for, yeah, I mean, the state gets their money how they do, and they are happy to subcontract that out to eligible applicants like cities or Conservation Districts, and we apply for a lot of their money, for sure.
And then with regards to the minutes?
Okay. Can I answer the, one of the part of the last question before you do that one? So we have take, we have received private grants before. They're more rare because of two different reasons, and it's kind of an exchange. Most private entities are willing to donate money or to put money to CD work or any work. They usually have more of a little political tie to it, and because of that, we're a little bit more careful, because we try to be apolitical, we're a little bit careful about those ties. So if there's something that's a little strings attached to it, in some way, shape, or form, we tend to veer away from them. In Pacific, right now, we, just because opportunities knocked, we have a couple larger federal grants. So the numbers as far as RCO commission, eventually over time, those are going to be a little skewed toward, we're going to have this, this federal chunk of money. We run on whatever the calendar runs for, like the feds, the farm, the farm bill's a five-year cycle, their years are from, from October 1st to September 30. It's different than the state. Our state runs off of biennial budget processes. As you guys know, July 1st to June 30, a two-year cycle. Counties run on just the general calendar, so we have to be very cognizant of how we're trying to match those dollars, because a lot of them require to have some fed or state or local match to go with the state stuff. Gets a little convoluted and crazy and everything, but we're pretty good at the puzzles. Alexander, the minutes.
Yeah. Oh, sorry. Going to blow everybody's ears out. For the minutes, we changed the way that we organized putting our minutes up on the website, start of 2023, so that's probably why the easier ones for you to find were 2022. It's good to note that it was a problem to find them, if it's difficult to find, and obviously, that doesn't do us any good. We went from listing them out month by month in a list, going down that portion of the website, and now we're doing them, they're all compiled on a Dropbox where we have the link on there, so they should all be up to date on the Dropbox link. But the old way that we did it from 2022 is usually the first thing that people see. So the Dropbox link is the new way that we do that, and so that is good for me to know, because I'm reworking our website this week, so I'll make them all so that way they're more accessible and easier to find.
So I'll just let you know, I was, I was on Dropbox. I was able to find all the agendas for this year, but the folder for the minutes said it was empty, so, for 2023, so.
Good to know.
Just something to look at.
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate that.
Rich? So one of the elements in the room is always taxation. I realize you guys are not a taxing, have no taxing authority, but our county commissioners do. I have spoken to them, they don't have any, nothing's on their radar for having a rate or a charge or a special assessment. But for, to take away the confusion, this is pretty self-explanatory to me, I just would like you guys to interpret for us, R C W 8908, 405, and 400 talk about the special assessment or the rates. But I'm saying that even with both of them combined, they can't be together more than five. even with both of them combined, they can't beat together more than $5 per parcel number or $10 an acre. Am I misreading anything anywhere? Is that our exposure if the county commissioners wanted to impose a special rate or tax?
Larger than $5.
Well, it's, it's five right now. There are some districts that have, I think someone quoted in last meeting, Thurston, right? Thurston Management, they have their dreams, right? They put a resolution forward this year wanting to that get, to be increased, and it was denied at the area meeting.
But King CD and Pierce, a special law that was changed a couple of years ago, it's just those two CDs have the ability to go up to $12.
So, but the, my, I'll just say real quick, my interpretation of the assessment is like you said, if, if two out of the three commissioners voted that in, that could happen, just like a city council could agree to not opt out, right? Those are, we talked about that. Those are both two things the Conservation District has no control over, and have never had control over. Back to the representation, I guess, for folks in the room, what they want to see. So vote in the reps, you want to have your reality painted. But that is, there is no kind of loophole there where the cities cannot get out, right? And that is capped currently in RCW at $5, and that's where.
Yeah, and I, I've been around CD world, working for CDs for 17 years-ish, I think might be more than that. But anyway, in these two CDs, and I've never heard any of the county commissioners ever talking about doing rates and charges. Funny enough, about four years ago, the Pacific County, County Commissioners, they did vote in a rates and charges for the weed board, but not for the CD. The Pacific Conservation District's been around since 1948, the Gray's Harbor Conservation District's been around since 1942, and there's never been a rates and charges for using one of the CDs. And if you look at rural CDs across the state, how many, how many CDs have a rates and charges out of 45, is it 12?
It's, it's in the teens, yeah.
All right, thanks, guys. Anybody else? No? All right, well, we'll open up to the public, so if anybody have any questions. Ken?
Can you hear me? Thank you. On your Conservation District, District Funding page, not speaking this type of English, can you explain to a citizen what a 90 to 100% reimbursement could be for, me as a private landowner, I go to you directly, and, or I go to the, to you directly and ask you to do something that would benefit my land, and you tell me then I might get charged 10% of what it really costs? And then on the reimbursement for the cost share are available 30 days after the project Somebody comes out and inspects the property and says, yep, that looks good, we'll pay you, and so then we get reimbursed. Are the cities or the entities allowed to do anything extra that would cost, that we could be taxed for, that we may not know about to begin with?
That's a good question, and I actually have this case in Pacific, and I like to use this kind of silver bullet for this issue. If I build a fence on your property, that adds value to a property. What's value do? It increases your taxable, right, value of your home. Because we're doing anything we do through a natural resource lens, Pacific County has an exemption form for improvements through their auditor, or assessor's office. I've signed many of them, I've read through them, I've had an attorney look at them, they're all good. So the only thing I could see is, again, if we did some sort of significant improvement to your home, we would want to definitely get you in that exemption form so that value can be assessed further.
But that would be up to your county assessor.
Right, which, same as Pacific, so.
Yes, I understand that. Again, can a city come in and direct that 42 acres be mowed down and put rocks on or done something to, to where the homeowners would have to pay for that?
I'm not going to speak for the city on what they can and can't do. The district would most likely not be involved in something like that because the landowner is paramount importance, important to our mission statement. We have, like I said, politically, we try to stay apolitical, and if, the landowner's paramount to our importance, so if we saw a situation where we were asked to work on something where the city was going to do something radically extreme, we probably wouldn't be involved.
All right. And homeowners would be notified, I'm assuming, if indeed there were four or five lots involved?
We try to, we have, like I said, we're trying to build a relationship with landowners, so we try to be an open book with that landowner. And getting back to the, the 90, 10%, as David said, we have some grants that were, will be 100%, but even if it was 10% or even 30% or something like that, there's two things that we do. One, there's something called in-kind contribution. So if the landowner helps out in any way, shape, or form on the project, that can count as their own effort. We calculate hours, there's a metrics, you know, if, if you have somebody helping doing this, there's, there's a calculation you can do, calculate the hours, and that can build up for that 10%. So technically, it might not even be something out of pocket. The second thing is, is that even if it was a 50, because there are grants that are 50/50, we're not talking about those right now for most of the things we're working, want to work in Ocean Shores on, but even if it was, we typically try to go find another grant to match that grant, so it doesn't cost the land or anything. Even when we work with the Pacific County or Gray's Harbor County work on a project, we try to find, we've been very, very good at either finding those matching dollars or they do like signage, doing flagging, doing their hours going into the project, calculates up to that 10%, and it's been very good about not costing the taxpayers any dollars besides what they're already paying for the staff already on the payroll.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, but.
Somebody else? Jane? Okay, go ahead.
Thanks, Dave Snoggs. Probably going to be an easy question. How does your responsibilities relate to that of the Department of Ecology?
Yeah, I, I.
I think I heard him, but they didn't. Hello? Yeah.
Sorry about that.
Go for it.
Yeah, how do you, your organization's responsibilities relate to the Department of Ecology?
I like this one. So it's a.
You can answer first, then I'll go.
Yeah, well, I used to work there too. Basically, we're non-regulatory, they're regulatory, and I'm going to try to speak plainly here, the cow in the creek issue, right? If there's a cow in the creek and a neighbor calls you into ecology, that's a water quality concern. They'll send a letter to your house. If, if they have a good working relationship with the district, before they threaten to do X, Y, and Z, they're going to say, we suggest you call the district to have them cost share or pay for that fence to keep the cows out of the creek. That's kind of their lens of it. If someone were to call our office and say there's a cow in the creek, we would say, not even call ecology, we say, we're non-regulatory, that's not a resource concern we're going to tackle. So that's how we're related. What we do do, however, with them, they have very complicated grants that you can go get. They're bare to manage, but when the dollar is enough and it's worth our time, we will go use their funding to build the fences, to plant the trees that get farmers, landowners out of critical area ordinance non-compliance, right? So it's a kind of a cycle, but like, if they wear the black hat, right, we can, you know, that means they're telling you to work with us first. Otherwise, if you don't work with us, the cows are still in the creek, you're still in the crosshairs of ecology, trying to fix it with your own time and time, so.
Yeah, and I'll, I'll take one step further on that, that like recently, there's been an effort under one of our programs to have the district do water quality monitoring around streams, and to have us report those water quality testing to Department of Ecology. We have openly, and I think even officially, said, we're not going to do that. That's not our job. We're never going to be in that regulatory role because we feel that, first of all, Department of Ecology, it's their job to do that. It's not our job, and if they're not doing it, that's not our problem. The second thing is, is that we're not in a reporting, we're never going to be in that position because our currency with landowners and our people we work with is the most important currency we have, more important than any of the dollars we bring in, because if we don't have that currency, this doesn't happen. So we're not going to be in that lens. In my early years working for the CD, I worked on a field crew, and I went to a landowner's property once and, to deal with knotweed, and I looked over, and they had another grow of a different kind of weed going on, and they looked very concerned at that moment. I said, I'm not here about that, I don't even see that, that is non-existent, I don't care, I'm here to deal with that over there. That's how we are. We have, we do farm plans and forest management plans, the landowner has a copy of that plan, and we have a copy of that plan. Nobody, you can't even FOIA or public record request that plan. It's been challenged in court, it is protected. We don't get any, even give any information out for that plan unless that landowner gives us permission to give it out, but if they have a copy of it, they're more than willing to do that themselves. We're very protective of those kind of things. I'm not trying to sound like that we're overly conservative, we're just very plain about where we're coming from. We want to help the landowner and get some stuff done.
Hi, from Land Emerg. You mentioned landowners, and you talk a lot about cows in creeks. Ocean Shores is predominantly residential, a lot of camping lots, people like my husband and I, we own a house, and we also own a lot that's undeveloped. Can you describe for us what would be our benefit to joining this Conservation District?
Which one do you guys want to, I can do it, but you guys can do it too?
I'll let him do the education portion, because I think humans in education are, you know, kind of obvious, but stormwater management, right? So I live in Aberdeen, I'm stoked when Aberdeen joined the district because my lot happens to flood a lot. And so in theory now, I, well, I'm an employee, so I can't get the cost share, but in theory, I could get a stormwater management plan for my residential parcel too. And ideally, we wouldn't just look at a parcel by parcel, we look at things holistically. So it would be, we could go to the city on your behalf, make a plan, bring capacity so the whole block can get that stormwater addressed. That's one thing, all the way down to pollinators or rain gardens, you know, things that are more food systems based, and I'll kick it to Alexander with that.
Yeah, so working within the cities is honestly a lot of what I do, doing education outreach, I do a lot of community events as well as work with students. So for me, the district's entering our, or I'm sorry, the city's entering our district boundary, really, in my eyes, allows me to bring the millions of dollars in education funding, both state federally and otherwise, to our students. So right now, as it is, because Ocean Shores is not within our boundary, I actually bring students outside of Ocean Shores from cities that are in our district boundary to Ocean Shores, because there are a lot of really valuable ecological, educational, outdoor education opportunities for those students, but the students in Ocean Shores don't get to take advantage of those same opportunities. So that's one big thing I see as an advantage for a city to enter our district boundary is they're automatically now able to get the funding. And when I do programs with schools, the schools don't pay for anything. We pay for the transportation, we pay for the materials, every part of the way, it's free for the kids, free for the teachers. So for me, that's my biggest, my biggest pitch to have any city join our district boundary is if you want more money for your kids to learn more, this is a great opportunity for it. But also David mentioned food systems. There are tons of food systems grants, Gray's Harbor and Pacific Counties specifically, our, most of both counties are considered food, food deserts and food insecure, and so we are actually able to get a lot of money to help do community gardens and food banks like we've done in South Bend, and we are currently starting in Aberdeen. And if that's something that is interesting to folks who live within the city boundary, we can certainly bring money to do that here as well. So that's another, another big benefit for residents.
We can also write grants for noxious weed control. We also have specialists on shoreline, not just in-stream, but shoreline erosion. His name's Jackson Blalock, he used to work for Washington Seegrant. So he's going to be working on the marine and estream erosion and also ecological-based kind of issues in those areas, in that arena. So these are all the type of things, and quite honestly, under that SWAPA HE we had mentioned before, the soil, water, air, plant, animal, human energy, you guys dream up an issue or find an issue, a problem, and you throw it at us. The worst thing that's going to happen is we're going to be honest with you and say, we don't know what to do with that, or we can't do anything with that. That's the worst thing. But other than that, we throw it, we, we talk about it, we try to challenge ourselves to try and find money and try to figure it out. So there might be something down, down the way that we don't even know yet. I personally am not just manager of the Conservation Districts, but I'm also on the Washington Coast Marine Advisory Committee. So we're doing a lot of stuff dealing with offshore energy and those issues all around that. We're talking about marine spatial planning and all that. I'm also the chair for the Pacific County Marine Resource Committee, and I work with all the marine resource committees up and down the coast. I work with all the salmon recovery lead entities up and down the coast. So there's a lot more tie-in and buy-in. It's not, one of the things I really love about Conservation District world is if we don't have the experts or the answers, I can go to my neighbor's CDs or go to the commission and get help. I can bring somebody in. That's an awesome, awesome resource.
Well, and just a real quick, and you don't have to answer this one right now, any chance we could get a grant to buy that marina back from the nation?
From the Aisland.
Oh, yeah, Aisland, right.
Good evening, my name is Joe DeVore. I had a question about withdrawal. If the city at a time in the future finds that it's not a good fit, they can vote to withdraw. However, I read that the commission can either reject or accept that. So my question is, have you ever had a municipality that elected to withdraw from the district, and has any of those requests been denied? Thank you.
Yeah, you know, and.
We all know the answer, but go ahead, Charlie.
Yeah, and, and when David reached out this morning and asked if I could come and participate, I, I recall the, the meeting in the past that talked about the withdrawal, and so I did a quick and dirty, and I have a, a record from 2000, it's, it's probably a little dated, but it basically has the history of when cities were added or excluded. And I just took a sample and went into our archives from 2003, and I looked at the meeting minutes for one of them, and it was, I think, like, two petitions for exclusion, and then there was ironically three cities that were wanting to get in. Generally, when it gets to that, I didn't see anything that, that said no. Typically, you know, there's, I think there's another piece of that process is that the city, the Conservation District has to also, they have a role in this. And from what I saw, none of them ever, you know, it's like, if you're not, if you're not happy in the, with how it's going, you know, you can't speak for a CD in 20 years, but you can, you know, if, if they're coming and it's a, you know, good faith effort, you know, I don't see why the CD would hold that, you know, against the, the city. So from what I saw in a quick and dirty look this morning, I've not seen any, any denials of, of withdrawal.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I want to add to that, that as of three years ago, I was under the assumption that Ocean Shores was in the district boundary. And it was pointed out to me that you guys were at one point, but in, I think in 1992, you guys opted out. So obviously, you guys had that option then, and you exercised it, so it's really up to the city council.
Follow-up then, in the, in the minutes, did they say why the city requested to withdraw at that time in 92?
I, I have a guess, but go ahead, Charlie.
I didn't, I'd have to go and see if we even have, so like, what I was looking at is just like, found a kind of a historical file, and I'd have to go and see how far back those go, otherwise we'd have to go to archives. But in those minutes, I think the only, I mean, because the motions were just really generic, like, just approved or withdraw, and everybody voted, but I think one comment I caught was just that, you know, it's coming from the CD board, they're not like, I didn't get the impression that the city came and like, had some big, you know, here's the reason why, you know, it's basically, it's coming from the CD, they want out, okay?
So in 1992 and 93, a number of cities opted out of the district boundary, including Raymond, Awaco, South Bend, Ocean Shores, I know, I think, I think there's a couple others in Gray's Harbor. And I believe. And I believe, from my research of a couple years ago, I talked into the city of Raymond, there was, that was when the rates and charges, when that became a big buzz around the cities, and they were afraid of getting rates and charges put on the cities, completely understandable. But there hasn't been any rates and charges since then. So unfortunately, the cities didn't have any services over the last couple decades. You guys can always opt back out. I know my supervisors right now, and I know they're not going to be opposed, if somebody wants to opt in or opt out, they're going to follow that, that request. Saying that, you're right. If you got, but remember, those people can be elected in and they can be elected out, you know, there's, there is, it might be a little longer process, but believe me, I pretty sure you could make it happen if you really, really wanted to opt back out and you were getting the cooperation that you wanted.
I'll say two in those packets, sorry there, there's the list on the very back page, is 17 some odd bullet points of those, a little bit dated, but examples of either opting requests or outs, and they were all passed unanimously. And under A, County where I manage, we annexed two cities in Pacific now too, and this would be our third. So in my short experience doing this too, it's pretty much, the commission looks forward to opting them in, would not be adverse to opting them out, it's just another thing on their agenda for the day, so.
Hi. I think the main issue here is that we're all concerned about blank checks being issued for us to sign, like Rich mentioned on RCW 89.08.400 titled Special Assessments for Natural Resource Conservation. And it says, special assessments are authorized to be imposed for conservation districts as provided in this section. Activities and programs to conserve natural resources, including soil and water, are declared to be of special benefit to lands and may be used as a basis upon which special assessments are imposed. And so I, I briefly looked at the literature you passed out, I didn't really find where in your financials you included the funds from special assessments.
We don't have any. We don't have any.
Okay, so no one has any special assessments for the conservation district, Grace Harbor County?
So the only dollars that we get from any county, out of the two counties, we get $7,500 a year out of their operational budget from Pacific County. In Grace Harbor, we don't get any. So all the rest of the dollars that we get are through a grant apparatus.
So the $7,500 from Pacific County comes from assessments on property taxes, is that correct?
No.
Where do they get the money from?
Well, it's through taxes, but it's through their general budget. It's not an assessment.
Okay, so the taxpayers are still paying it though, I guess?
Well, technically, the taxpayers on any of the state or federal grants, they're paying for it.
Right.
Talking about this.
That's absolutely true, correct, okay. Because I was just wondering what a special assessment would be on like a $200,000 home here.
So it's not by, by dollar value, it'd be per parcel, and the max would be $5 per parcel.
And that can legally never be raised?
No, because if it goes to the Washington State Legislature, and they decide that they want to raise that from $5 to 10, or put the cap, raise the cap, they could do that, but that doesn't automatically mean that you automatically pay more either.
Okay.
That just gives the option for the county to raise it if they want to.
Okay.
Even though it's a $5 cap, the county could literally put it at $1.
Sure.
Or 50 cents, it's whatever they decide the cap is.
Okay, okay, well, thank you very much.
Okay, you're welcome.
Hello, thank you very much for coming in tonight, I appreciate it.
Yeah.
I just wanted a clarification, and I, I have a bunch of questions, but I'll keep it simple because there's two that came up and something you discussed. You did say that there were counties that put resolutions in that tried to raise that amount?
Mm-hmm.
Were they successful or not?
No. Okay. Died at our Southwest area meeting. I mean, there's nothing more to say about that.
Yes.
Because no one, that's Thurston County, we all know that's not going to fly for us, so we just, you know, take.
Well, and that's another thing I want to, to be clarified, it's not you that are taxing, it's our county that we need to talk to, it's the county that's, that's doing the assessments. So there were two statements made, and I just wanted to kind of feel and find where they were coming from. At the beginning, you said that you guys asked Ocean Shores to become part of the district, and I had heard, heard opposite Ocean Shores asked be in the district.
Actually, if you want the correct history, what happened was, is that the guy, the gentleman that I mentioned, Jackson Blaylock, so first of all, like I said, I thought Ocean Shores was already in. It was just recently, through going through, checking what our district boundary was, that I found out that Ocean Shores was not. And really, there wasn't any activity to come and reach out to you guys or anything. But I believe Sarah had met with Jackson Blaylock when he was working for Washington Seagrant, and he knew he was going to come and work for us, and he had asked, is Ocean Shores in the district boundary? And through, through that conversation, then it came back to me that Sarah was interested in, hey, you know, maybe this could be something we could make happen and make work and everything, and Jackson approached me, so I sent an email back and said, yeah, so if Ocean Shores is interested, we can come and talk to them. And so that's where that process started. I don't think it was really Ocean Shores asking us, or us asking Ocean Shores, it was more like a, hey, this could be a collaboration, let's see what happens. So that was pretty much the beginnings of all of this.
Okay, is there any benefit, other than what you stated, for Ocean Shores becoming part of the conservation district?
As I've said, and I'll just repeat it, it's for your landowners and/or the city as a landowner to work with them to bring, for us to be a grant writing entity and an implementation entity to come and help. Two, the citizens can then vote in our elections and have a voice in who's running the conservation district. And three, that somebody who wants to serve on the district board could do so.
Okay, so another thing that was said was that if Ocean Shores isn't part of the conservation district, they can't utilize your resources. But I know of at least three properties here in Ocean Shores that are part of the conservation district, can you explain that?
They're not.
It is on your map, they are listed as conservation district.
And they're within the city limits?
Yes, they are.
Well, it's our map, I'm sorry, I don't, I'm in charge of all that, so I don't know what you mean by our map, because I don't even have a map.
Well, there is, there is, there is a, a map, if you go onto Google and start looking at the Grace Harbor Conservation District, there is a map that shows what properties are involved in the conservation district and what are not. And there are three properties in the city of Ocean.
So I would be very interested to know that also, because I'm not aware of that.
So just FYI, can we maybe research that offline? We have about two minutes before the next, our council meeting starts.
Yeah, so just real quick, I, I'm very interested in that also, because there's a caveat that if the city had expanded its boundaries when the district was created.
Rich actually has an answer.
Okay, go ahead. Rich has an answer, I love it.
Is it possible a citizen donated land to you?
Like through, through an easement?
It's donated to the conservation district.
That is possible, they can do that. We too take donations.
I believe that's what it is.
Okay.
So I have the name of.
It's a guess.
I have the name of the property owner, I just don't care to say it at the moment.
Oh, sure, that's fine.
We can discuss it later and see if that, if it was a donation or if they are actually utilizing services. That was my only other question, thank you very much.
And I'll say one thing with a quick minute if I can.
You got it.
Thirty seconds. All right, well, 20 seconds. I heard Sarah wrote $8 million in grants by herself, and that was probably across a bunch of different areas, right? The benefit is that we can bring $10 million with 20 people to one thing. So if you have erosion, it won't take like five years for us to start thinking about doing it. We'll start doing it, we'll get the design. So it speeds up time, at the end of the day, it's about time, so.
Speaking of time, I'm out. Thank you very, very much for coming. I, I'm dropping.
Can I ask just one real quick question?
We, we literally have to start our next meeting at 6 o'clock.
As a landowner, how do we reach out to you if we have an issue that we want to bring up?
I will answer that, I'll sign.
Thank you.
All right, and I, it was amazing having you here, we appreciate you not having to say it, thank you.